Right, he's the one I don't see on the screen.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, we'll call the Bucksport Town Council meeting to order for Thursday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Just a reminder that this meeting is held virtually. Can be viewed on Local People Channel thirteen oh three or via the internet by going to townhallstreams.com and selecting Bucksport. You may email questions or comments prior to or during the meeting to suicide at bucksportmain.gov. Or call during the meeting at four six nine seven three six eight. Roll call Jake.
Counselor Eastman.
President.
Counsel Morrison.
President.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette.
President.
Mayor Stewart.
President.
Counsel Ormsby.
Here.
Counsel Downs.
Here.
Counsel Rankin.
Here.
Uh, next is presentation of town council recognitions. We have a couple tonight. The first is an Eagle Scout. Um, from Jacob, Jacob Brzezowski. Is Jacob here?
Yes, he is. Um. We're very fortunate tonight to have two Eagle Scouts um with us to discuss um. Projects they're working on. Um, so the first is Jacob. So you have the floor, Jacob, to um just describe to the council what it is that you. Want to do and. How are you gonna do it?
I don't know if he's connected or not.
I I see he's he's there, but and I saw him a few minutes ago, but and it looks like he's talking, but we're not hearing him.
Yeah, there's something going on because you got that that tone in the background when he when he fires up his mic.
Yeah, I don't hear that, but he just shut off his mic.
Did anybody else hear the tone?
No.
Um, uh, how about if Jacob's got some technical stuff? Uh, is Mason Forrest here?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, we can chat with Mason and.
Sure.
Um, so for my Eagle project, what I want to do is the Bucksport Town Pool. Um, ever I've been going there since I was a kid and um. The biggest problem they've always seemed to have there is there's no place to put anything. People rely on the benches and the fences. And uh, stuff gets stolen, unfortunately. So the project I want to do is I want to build uh four sets of cubbies for the town pools. People can put shoes, bags, and towels. Um, in a safe place while they're at the pool. And the way I plan on doing this is this Saturday, I'm having a bottle drive. Uh, I'm gonna raise money and uh, I have a builder who's set to help me out. And we're gonna try and get these built before the pool opens this summer.
Great. And where where can the folks drop off their bottles? Is that up at the middle school? Is that what I saw?
It'll be up at the high school this Saturday, anytime between ten and two. And if you need someone to pick them up another day, or you won't be able to be there. Um, they can email me at uh, masonfourseventyfour@gmail.com. Or they can call um. Uh, Call My Troop, which I believe is on our Facebook page online. Um, and we can arrange a time to come get your bottles.
Great.
We've been ad- we've been advertising this along with our cleanup day um for this Saturday um, which coincides with this, so. People can clean out their bottles and clean up the road sides and we'll have.
That's right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Well, good luck to you, Mason. And thank you for for taking that project on.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Jacob, you back there yet? Oh, I all I get is that uh, the tone still. Sue, do you want to go to Jacob's project real quick?
Hold on just one second. Um. Um. Jacob is um looking to um. Do a project at the soccer field um to uh. Create a um. I think it's called a kick wall, but it's a I don't play soccer, so I don't know the answer to this, but um. He is um, the project he has selected will benefit the school and the community in construction of a kickboard for the boys' practice soccer field. Um, he has discussed the project with uh Coach Boynton and Assistant Principal Athletic Director Aaron Ward, and both are supportive of this project. Um, it was suggested that he presented the council meeting, um, which is why we did this invitation. Um, I I think this would be a great project that would um. Benefit our soccer programs and um those using the fields. Um, I. I I said Jacob was showing a while ago, you know, you can see him video wise too. I'm not sure exactly why. We can't hear him this evening, but um. Think this is a very worthwhile project and um in hopes that council will support this so that he can move forward.
Great. Is he is he also in your troop too, Mason, I assume?
Yes, he is. Yeah.
Well, that's pretty that's pretty impressive to have two Eagle Scouts coming through the same troop at the same time.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Nice. Nice.
Mister Mister Mayor, if I can just for a moment.
Please.
I these both of these young men I've known for the better part of their lives and I find as I get older, I I I'm. I'm constantly feeling a little bit in moments like this because I can remember both of them when they wore blue shirts and they were Cub Scouts. Um, and they're also my son's age. Um, they're both great young men. Um, and I'm confident that they will uh deliver here and um I commend them for their uh for both of their projects. Um, they've done very well in Scouts and very well in many other pursuits um in school. Um, and I'm particularly proud of both of them.
Awesome. Awesome.
Thank you, Paul.
We'll keep up the good work, gentlemen. And uh, we'll can't look can't wait to see the finished product, so. Anything else from anybody on the council?
Uh, can you hear me now by any chance?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, I'm so sorry about that. I have switched.
You're almost timed out, Jacob, but go ahead. I'm gonna give you more.
Alright.
So so what's your project, Jacob, please?
So, yes, building that kick wall for the uh practice soccer field is. The project I am going forward with. And um.
And that will be ready for the soccer season in the fall?
That is the plan, yes.
Great. Well, like we said to to both of you young gentlemen, nice job. Keep up the good work and can't wait to see the finished product. So thank you for coming to the council. Uh, the next recognition or that we have is Penobscot Maritime Heritage Association July seventeenth event. Dick Campbell.
This is Rich. I'll this is gonna be postponed um. Indefinitely at this point.
Okay. Sue.
I I have one other um that I want to note. We're gonna get to it in a minute under the correspondence, but. Um, on May third, I I kept the staff a little later to talk to them about um our upcoming um. Roxanne retiring and things that we were gonna be working on. And so we didn't leave at our normal time. We left later. And. I got home. To get a message from one of my. Employees that said Jacob did a great job tonight. I didn't know what they were talking about. And what had happened is when Jacob was going home, there was a person in distress on the Penobscot Narrows Bridge. And Jacob stopped his car and got out and. Talked this. Person out of. Something more drastic and walked them across the bridge. And. The person who called that in was our assessor. Who was behind Jacob on his way home and many other cars had gone by, but Caitlin is the one that. Slowed down and said, and he said, call, and they did. But I just wanted to recognize. The extraordinary efforts of of Jacob in this case and um thank him and Caitlin for. Being the very. Caring and compassionate people that they are. Um, we all know Jacob is also a pastor, but um he really went above and beyond and um Deputy Chief Winchester. Told me what a great job he did in diffusing this situation. So it I it's not on the agenda and he probably would have taken it off. I put it on, but I I just wanted you all to know that. Um, that's what happened and timing is everything because um if we had gotten out at our normal time, he wouldn't have been there to do it. But. We didn't and he did, so.
Nice job, Jake. Thank you. I am I am also gonna take a little uh mayor privilege here. And 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 again, uh another set of our our folks that work for the town that did great work. Luke and David and Yusu um dealing with the situation out to the Fountain Inn. Um. That 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 took a lot. Um, and I'm not a hundred percent sure everybody realizes how much effort went into probably saving somebody's life. Um, and 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 you guys did more work with that than. I I I don't know if people will ever realize what what went into that. And again, that just goes to the spirit of this town. Again, what Jacob did, you know, being the one person that pulls over, you know, is doing those extra things. Um, it it doesn't. It there there was nobody looking for limelight on it. It's doing it because it's the right thing to do. Um, and and we're not doing it for any other reason than that. And that's, I think, what what sets us apart from a lot of a lot of places. Um, nobody asks for these things. They don't look for the recognition. Um, I know you guys put in hours and hours and days um to deal with that stuff. And and like I said, there's no doubt in my mind that it probably saved a life, so. That wasn't on the agenda. That probably would have been taken off too, but too bad. Um, I wanted to make sure that it was it was noted in a in an official capacity, so nice job.
Thank you.
And I I I assumed I didn't see David or Luke on here, so um please make sure that they get they pass that on to them too.
I will do that.
Uh, next is the town council minutes from four twenty-two. How the council likes to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Jake.
Counsel Eastman.
Approve.
Counsel Morrison.
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette.
Approve.
Mayor Stewart.
Approve.
Counsel Ormsby.
Approve.
Counsel Downs.
Approve.
Counsel Rankin.
Approve. Receive and review correspondence. Uh, we have four police calls, two, three on Verona, one on Orland, um one, if you had a chance to read them. Um, dealt with uh what Jacob's deal was. Um, and the other ones are cruise main update, small ships. I assume that's you, Rich.
Um, I guess, yes. Um, so you should have had the correspondence in your packets. Um, the state of Maine has approved the sailing of the American Cruise Line cruise ships this season. Um, passengers have to be um vaccinated. Uh, the ships uh will not be operating at a hundred percent. Um, and they will be uh coming to Maine this season.
Are we are we on the stops again?
We are. We are a an actual stop now. So previously, we would be a Saturday to sun uh set. A late Saturday night, early Monday morning departure. We are now on an every ten day schedule. Um, beginning June sixteenth and ending um September sixteenth. Uh, and because of this uh, because of the cruise line schedule, that's why we had to um postpone the PMHA tall ships because the docks in use um for the cruise line.
Great. Any questions on any of those uh those items? Alright. Um, orders is to consider introduce the first reading of a contract zone for map one lot zero three and lot zero five. Map thirty-six lot zero five to allow development of a five megawatt solar project. And has this gone to the planning board yet? I I thought it has and they approved it?
Yeah, if you can hold on just one second, let me see if I sent him an invitation. He might not be here because he didn't get invited. Um.
I I I am gonna ask you, and my only concern is um. And I realize we've got another reading and then a public hearing on this. I I guess I'm just wondering, is this the proper use for that? When you when you look at where what initially there was there was there was talk of housing up there? Um. When you look at how that's zoned out and where it's mapped out and 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 the access to that's rule fifteen, I I just have to question if that is, if we're going in the right direction by. Turning that into a solar farm when we're screaming for for housing and and land for development. I realize it's not our property to sell, but I would I would just. I think we want to have make sure we have good conversation about when we're when we're changing these. Um. Zoning, what we're allowing to go into these certain places, you know, there there it is it is zone for commercial, but not for for um. Solar panels. And and again, I I'm I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's what we want to have sitting on those pieces of property there, so. Again, first reading and and I realize we're gonna have some more hearings on it, but I just wanted to kind of have people put that on the front of their mind to think about when. Get these things popping up. Sue?
Yeah, the this um, this proposal um has been through the planning board and the planning board's public hearing process. The reason it's to you is because it was approved by the planning board conditional on approval by the council.
Sure.
Um, they did have um public hearing, butters were notified. There there wasn't um negative. Feedback um in regard to this. This proposal is, um, the company's name is Emresco. It is looking to do what it's similar to community solar. It's looking for um. Entities such as RFU twenty-five and the town um to contract for um. The the credits, the community solar credits that are different from our current. The solar power that we generate and that um, but it's a.
What what I would like to see if if possible, because I know that there are a, and I don't know if Luke can get that or if that's something that's available, of the other. Other places that are going up or that are proposed for solar farms. Because I know there's several others in the area. And I'm kind of curious on, you know, are we oversaturating? Are I I know some have folded, some haven't. Um, I think it would be interesting to see where those are where those are going or proposed to go.
There there are four that one is in Prospect and three are on the peninsula, the Blue Hill Peninsula. Those are the ones that are um currently in the pipeline with Central Maine in addition to this one. Um, for Emresco. And if you remember, we didn't put continue our RFP for a solar provider for the former landfill because of the. Um, issue with the substation here and whether or not that. Would have sufficient capacity to take on another project, considering how many were already in the in the pipeline. So. Yeah, there are four other ones, but they're they're not in um, they're not in Bucksport. There's. One or two in Orland, I think, that have been, but there are a couple down on the peninsula that are, and then one in Prospect. Those are the ones, but we can add certainly more information on this um for the the next would. Then your next meeting um on the twenty-seventh will be um the second reading and the public hearing, so that would be um.
Yep. Thank you. Anybody else have anything else on that? Um, you know, pop up. Uh, next item is just.
Vice President.
Hand up. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, if I could just give you some background from the school district perspective, um, we've been approached by Emresco. Um, they presented to the facilities committee. Um, no action was taken by the facilities committee. Nothing's gone to the school board. Uh, we contract power through Maine Power Power Options. And for us to do solar, the company's gonna have to agree to do a um not a kilowatt credit, but actually a financial. Reimbursement. So we're interested in it, but we're waiting to see who the players are, where it's gonna fall out. Um, the only concerns we have really, um, number one is this gonna be approved in the community because we want to support a community project first. Um, the other thing is they're looking for a twenty-year term commitment. Um, so we still have a ways to go, but we're open for the conversation.
Yeah, the the net energy credit law that was passed last year, um, i- is a good deal. Um, I just, I I I think we want to be cautious on. On on just where we put the solar panels is where I guess my concern. I don't I don't doubt that it's not a good deal for all, um. But I think we just want to be due diligence to make sure we're 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 using our resources. Uh, discussion items. And the first one is a garden club request to plant a tree in order of Jerry Spooner.
That that item is also going to be tabled indefinitely.
Okay. The next is the Hillside Cemetery request for funding. I think everybody saw a letter in their uh their packet. Sue, do you have any more on that or is it just a?
Yes, um, you would ask, the the town annually funds them to the tune of three hundred dollars. The it our annual appropriation to that cemetery is three hundred dollars. Um. That we've done for some time. That was a question that was raised last time and that the answer is three hundred dollars a year is what we. Is what we do um in that regard.
What is the what i- is there other? Rules or or statutes in effect that if as far as cemeteries in disrepair, if they if they if they have a. Committee that's supposed to be responsible for them, but they're they they longer can or can't or can't afford it?
The only ones the town are responsible for are cemeteries that are considered to be ancient burial grounds that have. Um. Uh, that are are not on town-owned property, are ancient burial grounds that have. Veterans in it from the seventeen, eh, from the Revolutionary War time period. And that's, those are the ones that the town then, that's where we are with nine seventeen River Road. Um, but. I I'm not sure if Hillside Cemetery. Qualifies for that or or not. If there are veterans, if if so, the. The requirement for the town would be if they did would be that it it was maintained twice a year, but that's the requirement is that. It be that that be done. Um. There are a lot of. As Counselor Downs knows, there's a lot of cemeteries out there that are um not necessarily town-owned that are in various states of. Repair or disrepair, but um. If. If the council decides to add. A non-town-owned cemetery that doesn't qualify for the ancient burial ground, its list of things to do, I think that there might be quite a list.
Sure. I I I guess what I was wondering, maybe Kathy, if you have a cemetery committee and. Like a lot of these things where prices do increase and and everything's increasing, these these cemeteries have been a lot, I think, what do we have, Sue, maybe ten or eleven? They've all been funded at the same level. Is that something that maybe the cemetery can make a look at to see if if there was an increase of a hundred dollars to a cemetery or something? I don't know if that's the ones that we do support.
I don't know how that's ever come about. Do you know, Sue? For the funding on them? I've never been involved in that. It's always been there.
All I have done is is follow exactly what the town's done and forever would be.
Forever.
These funding levels have changed and.
Kathy, do you know if there have been cemeteries added to that or is it was it sort of the same number for as long as you can remember?
Same number as long as I can remember. Yeah.
Hillside was added last year. We put in ten thousand dollars to deal with radar and fencing and all of that kind of stuff. That was added, not Hillside.
The old Methodist.
Yeah, the old Methodist, the nine seventeen River Road one was because of that requirement, but. Yeah, there's a state the same.
Any thoughts from the council?
I think if we hold a cemetery meeting and look at possibly raising it because it never has, to my knowledge, increased at all, that could help.
That would be my. My two cents would be that it should go to the cemetery committee for them to look at and.
Okay.
Decide from there.
Everybody okay with that? Alright, we'll 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 set that up, Kathy?
Yes, we'll schedule it at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, next item is the agenda items. The first is resolve twenty twenty-one sixty-one to approve bids for the year two of the road project and twenty twenty-one paving. How the council like to proceed?
Second.
Motion to second. Comments? I I saw Jay there, Sue.
Well, I'll start and Jake can. We got a really good price. Um, this is a better price than we had last year um by. Four dollars. I I think last year's was sixty-seven, this year it's sixty-three. Um, is that correct, Jay? Something like that. It was close. It it's it's a better price, but this one, um, this bid includes the. Portion of the the Silver Lake reclaimed grade pave. As well as our maintenance five miles of paving that when we did this. Road project, we discussed the fact that we needed to do our annual maintenance paving or we'd be right back in this mess again if we didn't keep up with road maintenance and. So that's on there too. Um, Jay, if you wanted to talk about what part of the project this is, that would be.
Yeah, actually, I I did the calculation. It's it was three dollars thirty-seven cents a ton was the uh. The decrease in price this year. Which is very good. And uh, the section of work is not on the Silver Lake Road. It's on the uh Millvale Road, the the old Hanks Road section of Millvale. And I believe you all had the figures as I uh. Forward, yep. Um, the talking with the uh Thibodeau, the. The company I recommended going with. I've spoken with them and they're eager to schedule work. They'd like to get started as soon as they can. Doing the groundwork on the Millvale section. Get that base layer pavement installed. And kind of let it cure for a short time. And then come back in and put the surface on when we do our regular maintenance paving and do that all at the same time. But all of it to be done during the summer season.
Thanks. Other questions? Kathy?
Jay, was Silver Lake included in that at any one point?
It it's scheduled for next season.
Next, next year.
Not this year.
Okay.
And that that section runs from. Oh, it runs from the power line crossing just after the boat landing. From there all the way to the uh the four corners, the Millvale-Silver Lake intersection.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, next year is that plus the downtown work that um.
Yes.
Was part of that. That will that's year three.
Alright, anything else? We have a motion to the second. Jake?
Counsel Morrison had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't. I couldn't see. I he's not on my screen. Sorry. Jim?
Yeah, uh, is anything gonna be done at all for that Silver Lake section from uh what you just pointed out? Anything gonna be done to that this year?
This year, uh, only just uh patching as necessary. There was a couple of spots that were identified that maybe we'll do some shoulder filling. But as far as pavement, no, no pavement this year.
Well.
It would be it would kind of be a waste to do it and then turn around and and. It would, it would kind of be a waste to do it and then turn around and rebuild the following year.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I apologize, I can't see everybody's picture, so if somebody sees, says something, speak out, please. Uh, Jacob?
Council Eastman?
Approve.
Council Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Council Armstrong?
Approve.
Council Downs?
Approve.
Council Rankin?
Approve.
Next is resolve twenty twenty-one sixty-three to approve the salt price for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year with the State of Maine salt contract. How would the council like to proceed?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to the second? Questions? Where's that price, Jay, aligned to last year's?
It's very close, it's within, within a dollar. I, I, it escapes me what last year's price is, I'm sorry.
Twenty cents less than last.
Twenty cents less.
Yes. Um, this, if you remember a couple of years ago, we got the Hancock County where we used to bid through, went out of business and we never, we missed the boat, so to speak, with the state contract. And then this past year, we were included in, and this upcoming year, we would be as well, and this is, um, forty-five ninety is twenty cents less than that, which was less than the contract prior to that by close to a dollar, so we're, that price is holding pretty steady for us.
Questions from the council? Jacob?
Council Eastman?
Approve.
Council Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Council Armstrong?
Approve.
Council Downs?
Approve.
Council Rankin?
Approve.
Itemized resignations, appointments, assignments, or elections, we don't have any. Um, ten is approval of quick claims, discharge, and deeds, we have none. Eleven is town manager report, Sue? You're muted, Sue.
Apologies. Um, the senior center is in need of.
I'm gonna interrupt you real quick, Sue, for a second, I'll be glad when I don't have to say that anymore, just to be honest with you.
Really good news for you then.
I know, right?
Cause I'm thinking that this might be our last one of these, but, um, the senior center is in need of improving its air conditioning for use in the summer months. Um, they had, they've had some inside units in the past that which don't you, work very well and, um, are loud, and if they tried to do them with window units, it would, it would be louder still, which is not conducive to bingo or poker, or the kind of events that the seniors have where they're trying to hear each other. Um, we have a long-term lease on that facility that we paid for, um, and the best solution to the issue would be installation of, uh, heat pumps, which would, it's a big space, there's the smaller living area attached to it, but it would take three units to do that space. I'd like to get permission to get three quotes for this project to be on the agenda for the twenty-seventh. Um, this is something we could use some of the funding that the town will receive from the stimulus score in terms of improving our senior center, and it, it would be ten thousand dollars or less, um, for this. So if you don't have any objections, I would like to bring those to you for the next meeting. I'm happy to report that the town dock and marina floats are in the water, and there were no mishaps during that installation. The marina will be open for business again on the fifteenth, and I wanna thank the highway crew as well as the marina crew and Rich for getting things set up again for the coming season. I think we're gonna have a really good season. From talking to, um, our harbor master and marina manager, he has a lot of interest in, in our facility for this year, so. And the diesel is up and running, so we now have both gas and diesel at the, at the facility. A reminder that this Saturday is Make Bucksport Beautiful Day. We are encouraging residents to pitch in from nine AM to twelve PM to pick up litter along the roadsides near their homes or in areas where they like to walk or hike. The town crew will pick up the bags on Monday. People can pick up some trash bags and latex gloves at the town office between eight-thirty and nine AM on Saturday, and all participants will receive a coupon for a small soft-serve ice cream at either Carrier's, Crosby's, or the Dairy Port. As noted earlier in the meeting, Eagle Scout Mason Forest is also holding a bottle drive that day at the high school for a project to do improvements at the Tim Emery Municipal Pool, and we encourage everyone to support Mason and his project as well. We continue to get many applications for the vacancy at the town created by Roxanne Klepper's retirement in July. At the time of this writing, there were a hundred and three applications, right now it's up to a hundred and twelve. However, many have come from an online advertising source, and a number of those have not followed the instructions in the ad that asked for a completed job application and a cover letter. If any of you read the ad, I asked for a cover letter that indicated why that you thought you would be good for this job. The ability to express oneself is really necessary if you're gonna stand at this front counter for any length of time. So, anyway, I will be reviewing the applications next week and setting up interviews following the closing date of May nineteenth. We are also in the process of hiring two police officers to replace two that have resigned, one to go to another department and one to go into a different line of work. Both of our hires will require academy training, but we welcome them for our public safety department, and I think we have found two very good ones. So, I'm looking forward to that and certainly wish, um, our two, um, who are, who are moving on to, um, the very best. Um, Steve Bishop has been with us for many years and is gonna be, um, very much missed. And the other was a fairly new officer who has gone to work for Brewer, and we certainly wish him well, that works better for his family, so, um, public safety has some training ahead of it, but I'm confident that they can, this will all get done. Plans continue to move forward to establish the Bucksport Paper Mill Museum at the guardhouse at the former Verso Mill. Poet laureate and steel mill author Pat Ranzone came in, um, last week and provided me with a towel that is being produced with images from the mill years that will be sold as a fundraiser for the project. Isn't this cool? We have Larry Wall artwork on it, and it's a, it's like, uh, the old-fashioned flower sack towels is what it feels like, but that's it. So, they're working hard on fundraising for that project, which will, um, be great not only for Bucksport, but for the State of Maine, um, to have that, that facility there, so that's in process. Then the final thing, which isn't on the report, but it's because it just happened today, is that the changes in, um, masking requirements, distancing requirements, et cetera, I believe, take effect on the twenty-fourth of May, and our next meeting is the twenty-seventh. So, if you folks would like to do this in person, I believe that we can. Is that a yes or a no?
Everybody okay with in person?
Uh, yes, please.
Here we are.
Yep.
Okay, well, I will, if there are any special provisions necessary, I'll let you know, but, um, otherwise, we will be downstairs in the town office on the twenty-seventh at seven o'clock.
Everybody, everybody probably should get there early because you're gonna re, need to.
Except that, we, one more thing, we have a council who will be traveling at the time, who will still be able to participate remotely. The, their, the rule hasn't changed that says it's legal to do that. So, the council who will, will not be here in person will still be able to participate remotely in the meeting.
Perfect. Any questions for Sue?
That works for everybody.
Right? Sue, I have one question, and I, 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 I wish Luke was here, in, in his report, um, he noted that the, the waterfront was in dire need. Um, and I'm wondering what, what he was talking about, that, it doesn't seem like we, we've heard much about that, but I, I, I get nervous when I see the, the last li, I, I, line item is, and we really need to do something with the waterfront. Um, I'm kind of curious what he's, what he was getting at.
I can, I can explain.
Thank you, Richie.
Yes, uh, Luke, Luke was helping me this week on the waterfront. Right now, we only have Ron Gross on the waterfront until our high school kids are out of school. Um, as, as, as our town manager had, uh, mentioned a few months back, and the DEP noted equal timeframe, the riprap is disappearing on, on the, on the waterfront. The way the waterfront was constructed, it's very difficult without, we're most likely gonna need a barge to get to a lot of the places, um, to do that. But also, um, and I met with Orkin again today, that the lawn on the waterfront is really being disturbed by grubs, and then the crows that come at them. So Luke and I, um, there is no application that Orkin can provide. We are within twenty-five feet of the high watermark, that eliminates us from being able to use any type of, um, harmful substance pesticide to treat the areas. Instead of letting them go bland until we can find something that's, uh, environmentally friendly, uh, Luke and I, uh, spread seed, put hay on the areas right before the thunderstorm we just got the other day, but it's creaming across the entire waterfront. It's expanded up to, uh, Main Street, and it's even headed up as far as, uh, the corner of Broadway and Central Street, where these grubs are becoming invasive and really taking hold. Uh, we've had a, a serious problem with the brown-tailed moss on the waterfront. Ron and I took care of a bunch of nests on Friday, past Friday. Um, and the walkway itself is starting to, starting to show its years as well, so. We're think, uh, it, Luke, Luke, Luke is right, it looks like we, we may need to form a committee to, um, to review our next steps, um, to ensure all the projects we have going on between the fishing pier and the town dock, and, um, and, and the marina, that we don't lose the jewel itself, the actual walkway.
So, my, my, my quick, my first question is, the, the amount of money that they're throwing around from the federal government, that is out there for, for one-time projects, I mean, and, and this is a one-time project that needs to be fixed, what, what are our chances of, of garnering some of that?
We can apply.
Well, uh, no, I mean, are, are we getting, are we getting some, I hate to say it, free money, but are we getting money from the, that can be used?
We're getting four hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Initially, and then we may get some more from the state for, from Jim for school stuff, correct?
Well, the stuff that's coming back from the school as part of this, what we've traditionally done is put into the education reserve, so in the year that they have a hiccup and they need more money, that we can keep things level by pulling a little extra out of that reserve instead of zapping the mill rate, which is how we.
Okay.
And, and then this year, I, I will admit, we raised forty-one thousand dollars more for education than we needed to, because when the letter came from the school to raise the money, I, I read the wrong letter, the letter I fed.
I, I just think it's time that, you know, to, to, I, I think Rich said, you know, we, 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 we value that waterfront, we use that in a lot of the things we talk about, and to watch that thing fall into disrepair is an absolute travesty that I think we need to make sure that we don't let happen. Um, and, and to do that, if, if it, if it, it's, it's twenty-five, thirty years old, and, and we haven't done a thing to it other than watch it produce good stuff. So now, we gotta be good stewards, I think, and start taking care of some of the stuff that's, that's going wrong with it. Um, and I, and I think it's now that has to be done, I think by Luke, by Luke mentioning it and Rich mentioning it, and everybody seeing it, um, there's, there's no sense to wait, you know, we gotta figure out what it is that needs to get done, so. Anybody else?
I just had another question from Luke's report, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, uh, follow up on his, uh, interview, um, or his description of, uh, what's going on at the Fountain Inn. Um, I know the power's back on and the water's on, but only to a point, I don't, I don't wanna go down that rabbit hole, but I just, what I'm asking is apparently unless something has changed since Luke submitted his report, there's been very little done in the, um, area of maintenance or rectifying any of the situation up at the Fountain Inn, and please correct me if I misunderstood, I guess what I'm curious is, is to how close to day thirty are we getting? And what are our next steps here?
Uh, we, day thirty was Monday.
Thought so, okay.
And, um, we were told by the court on Tuesday that no appeal had been filed, the owner insisted there had. We checked again yesterday, and the court indicated that they had missed it when we contacted them the first time, and that, um, the owner had, had filed an appeal document with the court. That document doesn't change the validity or enforceability of our dangerous building. Nobody can stay there. Luke met with the contractor last Friday that the owner sent here, and, um, who indicated he was coming back last Wednesday, this past, yesterday. Um, and would be working there and staying there, and was told that working there is one thing, staying there is the other, no. No one is staying there. And our attorney has had correspondence with the owner reinforcing that, as well as the fact that simply sending a contractor didn't, um, provide the town with any plan or time estimates, or, um, remediation activities that could be seen as substantial. And that the town retained its right and authority to, um, move forward with what it wanted to, up to and including demolition if it chose. Now, the, the appeal document may impact it, but there are other discussions ongoing about, um, what the most expedient way to deal with that is, and the, uh, mortgage holders for the property are, um, aware of this and in significant contact with the town.
Thank you.
Thanks. A, anything else?
Back to the waterfront issue. Um, I, I think that there should be a committee, um, created and, and start looking at this, because I think it's very important, like you said, Pete, you know, we need to take care of the waterfront, and, um, so I think a committee should be created as soon as possible. That's my take.
Yep. Well, I, I, I think, Sue, if we could have something for our next council meeting, that we could have.
The commission will come up with a, some sort of format for the council to consider for a committee, and, uh, um, maybe the issues that need to be discussed in terms of.
Perfect.
It's not that we don't know what needs to be done, it's.
No, I, I, you're right, I just, I, I, we, I, talk is cheap, I, I hate to just talk about it, I think your actions are gonna have to start here pretty quick, so. Thank you. Um, where we at? Uh, public hearings, uh, first is a liquor license application for Carrier's Mainly Lobster. How would the council like to proceed?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to the second, any questions, comments? Jake?
Council Eastman?
Approve.
Council Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Council Armstrong?
Approve.
Council Downs?
Approve.
Council Rankin?
Approve.
Uh, next is Bucksport Bay Farmer's Market Outdoor Vendor License.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to the second, I will, I will note, um, they have been asked for their certificate of liability. We haven't received it yet, so I would suggest if we approve this, we approve it conditionally. Um, is that true that they wanna start this on next Thursday to have the farmer's market, Jake, is that? Um, is that true that they want to start this on next Thursday to have the farmer's market, Jake? Is that, will you understand it?
I, Rich, Rich would know that better than I.
Um, May twentieth, yes, next Thursday.
Can we do that, Jake, conditionally, that if we don't receive that, that it's not issued?
Certain, and, and they're very aware that we're requiring this of them and Rich and I, um, had been working with them and they said that they will provide it, so we'll just make sure that they do.
Okay. And, uh, whoever had the motion, you okay with doing that conditionally?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve. Uh, agenda items not on the, uh, discussion, it was not on the agenda. Uh, anybody have anything you want to talk about? Sue or Jacob, have you received any phone calls or emails or anything? The only thing I have, Sue, is, is, and again, is sticky wicket, just reading a lot of the paper, what, what is going on with our trash situation?
Um, the trash situation, um, they're in the process of, um, finalizing an agreement with a company that's seeking to buy it. It, right now is, um, still in the negotiation phase. We're back at Perk, um, in terms of where our trash is going, but, um, that when they get to the point where it's, uh, it's decision time for the, that purchase then, there may be a conversation depending on if anything is proposed to be changed in the contract that we had, that we have, um.
Is the M R C, uh, does the M R C have any appetite to go back and open this back or can they to, to, you know, look at Perk again and decide, have towns decide where they want to go like we did initially?
Well, I think because they are landowners of a, of that facility in Hampden, that, that that's unlikely.
Okay.
I, the proposal under this new owner is that the M R C would no longer be landowners. It would be more like the role they had with Perk instead of the one that they had with Fiberite in, in terms of not being a property owner, but, um, that that is still in a, um, I have a phone call that I have to return to the executive director of the M R C who called today and I didn't get back to him, but to talk about what their, um, this proposal is and at what point communities, um, may have an option in, out of a contract if that's what they were choosing to do.
Okay. I've got one, uh, anybody else have anything else I, I think to hijack this, but I got, I got one other thing I wanted to talk about. Jim?
I'd, I'd like to know, uh, uh, how much longer do we have on our contract with M R C?
Um, it was a twenty, I think it was a twenty-year contract and it's been four. It's, it's a, it's, it's a long time. I, I will, I look, I'll get that information for you, Jim, but it, it's, it's a, it, I believe twenty years was the contract.
Thank you.
One of the, uh, one of the, I, I guess it's, it's a concern or a comment that I've, I've heard lately, um, with summer season starting up um, and, and from some of our businesses, businesses and hotels and stuff. Um, we've got a lot of construction going on around and we've had folks that have been staying here in town. One of the complaints that they've had is that the place closes up at seven or eight o'clock in the evening. Um, and they're, they're, they're leaving the establishments and going to stay in Bangor or Ellsworth. And I, I don't have an answer and I don't, I, I, I guess I'm putting this out as a commentary that, you know, it starts, it starts with folks in the town wanting to have these places to go to, to open. I, we all realize that we all go to Bangor, we all go to Ellsworth. Uh, but we got some great places here in, in town too. And I think it's, it, we've got to, we've got to make that conscious effort to, to, to go to these places and, and, and say, no, we, we want you to stay open later, or we want you to have this, so it's not just the folks that are here visiting during the summer, it's got to be us all year long, and even if they were only open during the summer, you know, extending their hours a little bit. But it takes the, the five thousand folks that live here, um, to, to, to go to those places too, but we can't just put this all in the backs of the folks that visit. Um, so, you know, it's more of a commentary, I think, that, you know, if we, if we, if we, if we start flooding the places and, 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 you know, they, they have to stay open because they, they, they got, they're packed. Um, maybe that's a, maybe that's a good thing. We've got some, like I said, we've got some great, great businesses in town. Um, if we could just sort of go and, and say hi every once in a while, you can still go to Bangor, you can still go to Ellsworth, and you can go to Belfast and all those other places, um, but, 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 but frequent the places we've got around here. Um, and I think, I think it will go a long ways towards, you know, i- i- again, that trickle-down effect to the hotels, to the motels, um, to the Airbnbs, to those places where folks are looking to have something to do here in town because we do have a lot to offer. Um, so I just thought that was a commentary. Ed?
Yeah, I've got a, another comment from, uh, my youngest daughter, Alicia, again, about Ian's playground and, uh, she just had mentioned, I was talking to her, that just a little while back, we had some vandalism again at Ian's. And I wasn't, I could not remember if we have cameras there or not, but it was her suggestion that we do for the fact of vandalism. And God forbid, there was ever an incident with the kids or an adult and a kid that there'd be some, possibly some recording of it. That was her suggestion and I think it's a good one.
I would suggest, Ed, that maybe you mention that to, to, to Chief Gagin. They have a, they have a safety committee that meets. Um, I think it's either twice a month or once a month and they talk about just those type of things, and I think that's something that they probably look at and probably bring up.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
If I may, we actually met today and there's, um, more unfortunately than the, um, than the vandalism. The vandalism is a true, true statement, but, um, we had a walkthrough with MMA, uh, regarding the playground safety and they're going to give me a full detailed report that I will share with the council. We did have sixty cubic yards of, uh, play chips ordered and delivered and the town crew did a fantastic job getting those out as quick as they could and really fill, filling in the spots, but we've had, uh, two apparatuses destroyed, no longer exist. All of the swings are no longer in working conditions. And we're still about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty cubic yards of play chips too short. So that report will be coming out and the playground does and will need further attention.
Thanks, Rich.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Fire permits. Is there any chance that, uh, they're going to be being issued at the town, uh, safety building anywhere in the near future?
I don't know, Jim. Um, uh, they're, they're online now. You have to get them online now, correct?
Yes, you do.
Is that just a, Sue, is that just a change in procedure or policy or?
They, it was because they, they weren't, they weren't going into the building, that, that was.
So maybe with some.
But I will, I will check with, um, Deputy Chief Denning and see what this evolution of.
Maybe with relaxing of the.
And where, uh, as far as those permits, I will check with him and let you know.
I, I called the safety building and, uh, their answer to me was that the COVID was the reason that they weren't issuing them.
That I believe that they, COVID is because, uh, uh, up until very recently, and I don't think it is now. The only people allowed in that building have been people who work there and only after they took their temperature and answered fifty questions and all of those kind of things, so I think that they weren't, um, people weren't allowed in to do that, and that's what he probably meant by the, by COVID, but the restrictions are changing, um, are, are loosening, so perhaps that can change as well, but I will, I will follow up on that for you.
I thought it might be possible for them to meet somebody on the sidewalk.
We'll find out.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, uh, upcoming public hearings or committee assignments. I know we had talked about, uh, cemetery committee?
Yes.
You want to do that, uh, I, I'll let you decide, Kathy. Your schedule's easier to pick your own, so.
Um, how? We could do it, um, we could do it on the twenty-seventh.
I was gonna, if you want to do it at six-thirty on the twen- it shouldn't take very long to discuss it. Six-thirty, you want to go six-thirty on the twenty-seventh?
Um, depending if the other committee members can attend.
Hi.
Cause I know we need to discuss the River Road site too at some point. We've got a, a committee meeting for that. I don't know if we can combine that.
Yeah, I mean, if every, if everything, we, we could go, I think we could go Zoom or in person, so, you know, if you didn't want to make it either way.
Yeah.
Let, let's set it for the twenty-seventh. If we have to change it, we can change it.
Okay.
At six-thirty. Sue, there was somebody else?
That was, um, Public Safety Director Gagin, letting me know that the, the fire permit situation would be changing. So, um, I'll let you know exactly when that's happening, but he did indicate that that, that would be changing.
Thank you. And then the other committee, um, we will work on something for, um, waterfront. I guess waterfront development, if that's what we want to call it, or unification or fixing or whatever it is, but we'll have something to do for our next meeting.
Put that under a discussion item and give you a, a sort of an overview of what we, what we see as some priorities and um, the council can figure out how you want to address them.
Okay, thank you. You have economic development coming up anytime soon, Rich?
Uh, we did not have one last month, and we don't have one on the agenda for May, I believe. Mark, if I'm not mistaken, I think we're looking at getting back into June, um, so we can get the whole crew back together in person as well. We struggled with doing meetings for attendance.
Okay. All right, um, there's nothing else there. We will go into budget review. Uh, first up is education. Mr. Boothby.
Um, so you should all have got the, uh, notes I sent to Susan earlier today. Overall, I think it's pretty good news for everybody. Uh, we are up one point eight-five percent. This budget is based on that we would be full-time going a full school year. That's our plan, that's our hope, and hopefully it happens. Um, primary increases to this are special education, um, and transportation, and I hope everybody is up to speed on what we've done with transportation and the why behind it. Um, when we looked at a cumulative of a thirty-two percent increase of over five years on a bus contract on top of a five percent increase we received last year. Um, it was very clear that the break even was definitely not working in the favor of the district. Then combined with the federal monies, uh, and opportunities we had, we were actually able to purchase a bus fleet uh, for about thirty percent of the cost. Um, the remaining seventy percent is being funded through federal relief money and, uh, special education money. Um, so we took advantage of that. We're also in the process of establishing a, a transportation collaborative in Hancock County with Arlington School Department, Lemoine School Department and Hancock School Department, uh, where they will share the proportionally the cost of the common expenses around a bus garage, mechanics, transportation director and so on and so forth. All four of the communities, uh, purchased the exact same buses from the same vendor. Um, so we're going to have commonality of fleet, which is going to create efficiencies for our mechanics. Um, transportation was when we originally, uh, it was over twenty years ago that Town of Buckport uh, sold out and helped, uh, the Pierce's establish, uh, Sunrise Transportation. Definitely a good move at that point in time, but the world has changed and, uh, we're in a better position at this point in time to take care of that.
I remember you saying, Jim, when we first started the R S U, that, cause that was a discussion of just what the price was, and you said, there will come a time when I'll know what the number is and here we are, huh?
Yeah, and I monitor that every contract and I, I just follow that. And the, the reality, pardon me, we have a dog visiting that's having a fight with my granddog. Um, the, um, it's exciting to take on. We're looking to employ the drivers that we currently have. They're all local folks. We're going to be meeting with them. Uh, we've also, we haven't even advertised yet. We've had three people request applications to, for drivers and so we're excited about getting that taken care of. Um, other than that, um, we've really done quite well fiscally. Uh, Bucksport's assessment this year based on our preliminary two seventy-nine and earlier I was asking Kathy about the supplementary budget. We're doing everything based on the, the preliminary two seventy-nine because that's what I have. Um, but the preliminary number is actually Bucksport is pretty much flat, down five thousand eight hundred dollars from last year. Um, additionally, because our school year was so disrupted last year, we had money, unallocated balance um, that the school board authorized to, to, uh, send back three hundred thousand dollars to the member communities, so the, the Town of Bucksport will see a check for a hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. Now, if the supplemental budget passes, um, and I played around with some numbers with some other superintendents around the state, the mill rate will probably drop to somewhere around seven point two-six is our best guess. And that will bring in a little bit more than four hundred thousand dollars of new money into the district, which Bucksport will be benefiting that of, again, around that fifty-six percent, fifty-seven percent of, of the budget, so. Um, it's kind of an interesting time. Uh, fortunately, we're leveraging our federal monies quite well, taking advantage of it. And I'll say the same thing I say to all the communities, um, put this away into a reserve account for education, um, because we know costs never go down. They will continue to escalate. The more we can keep the profile flat, um, that's the goal. And, uh, that would help augment and offset so towns could avoid significant mill increases. That was real fast. I'm sorry. Um, is there any questions you may have? And I'm happy to answer anything.
When is your validation vote, Jim?
Uh, June eighth.
And that is that?
Budget meeting is, uh, May twenty-fifth, and I know that's a, everybody's excited to get in. We usually fill the Performing Arts Center with at least forty-one people. Um, so, please hurry, get there early.
So that is going to be a live event then also there?
That is going to be a live event also. Yes, we will, uh, require spacing, um, six feet between non-family members. Um, but given the fact that the Performing Arts Center close, holds up to five hundred people, I think we can squeeze them in.
I think so too. Any questions for Mr. Boothby?
What time is it going to start on the twenty-fifth, Jim?
Seven o'clock, Kathy.
Thank you.
You should see a district, uh, budget mailer going out. Um, that'll go to the, um, press, um, next Wednesday. Um, no, actually, we sent it to the press today, didn't we? Um, and so those will be mailed out prior to the district budget meeting, and that's our typical sixteen-page gives you an overview of the budget and some highlights from the schools.
Anything else? All right, Jim, go back to recovery mode.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support, folks. Have a good evening.
You too. Uh, next item is revenues, Sue.
Yes, um, you had in your packet some proposed re- revenue items this year and I, I am, I'm going to go over the, the items that are changing or that I'm proposing that change and one is an increase of fifty thousand dollars under our excise tax because of the way collections are coming in for excise, um. We raised it last year. I'm raising it again this year. That's a revenue offset that, um, it, it's purpose is to help offset our, our, uh, roads. It its purpose is to help offset our, our uh roads program. And so that um greatly reduces the amount of taxation necessary to fund public works. So we're increasing that one, um I'm decreasing that, uh last year we used six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from service. We didn't use it all, we appropriated it. That's the last thing that gets swept, um all the extra, all the leftovers. From any budget offset the need to take any out of surplus. We had identified that we could take up to six hundred and fifty thousand out of surplus, we didn't take anywhere near that. Amount, I'll, I won't by the end of this year. And so I'm looking to reduce that down to five hundred thousand dollars and again, we won't take all of that, but it's just. It's a more reasonable number um on an annual basis to be shooting for. Um. I've also um. Reduced the amount to take from our state revenue sharing surplus. That we generally take some from because our state revenue sharing is gonna be much higher this year at four point. Seven five, four point two five percent. It, if the supplemental budget moves forward, which we should know by the time that it, that it was last year. That significant increase, I'm looking um to do that, we have used a hundred thousand out of our school designated surplus. Last year, um but the education budget, I'm removing that um for this year because of the. Um, fact that the school budgets is is down proportionally and they're turning back more money, there's no need to take. Um, money out of that fund for that. Um. Ambulance user fees up slightly, um another twenty five thousand dollars, the FEMA grant subsidy. That thirty seven thousand was the last year of payment for the two employees that we got three years ago. That, that was the third year on that, so that that goes away because of that. Um. And I I increased our docking and mooring fees to reflect the fact that we will have. Um, one of the American Cruise Line ships on our dock every ten days throughout the summer. Um, which will, instead of being a fifteen hundred dollar. Um, which is what we were looking at when you only have them once or twice, but I I up that to twelve thousand dollars. It. Their, their overall revenues um are up about twenty five hundred dollars as presented. The numbers in here uh for homestead exemption and um Betty are identical. They won't be identical, those numbers will go up um for this year, I don't have those from Caitlin. For um this year uh yet, so this, this is the uh projected revenues. And then at next meeting, what you would have is the overall budget with. These is an ops, offset and our annual um PowerPoint. That talks about what each department costs, so to speak, under those terms. And 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 also um I filled in all of the, the actual budget numbers. For our fuel bids that we got in and went back through to look over the last four years. And our actual usage by department of each type of fuel, so that we could get those numbers down to. As close as possible to what that four year average is, um. It's a question every year, hopefully next year we'll be really close with it, but those of all uh would all be updated. And then the only other thing that needs to be um. Sort of determined is the next item on the agenda, which talks about outside agencies um. So that you can, I I can put it together so that then you have an overall picture to know what you wanna keep. Or what you don't wanna keep.
So everybody um saw Sue's memo on her funding recommendations for the outside agencies. Um, concerns, comments, questions?
I think that Sue, Sue addressed it quite well in her memo. And a lot of the, the initial thoughts um she had down on that, on that memo and and addressed them. So I, I agree with what, what she had written.
I agree with Council Ormsby.
Any uh descending dissensions? If not, then uh I think Sue, go ahead and plug that in with what you've got there. And um, I I like the idea of leaving some leftover too, I mean, you know, we never know what's gonna come up and. I am, I think we're, we're all of the opinion that when somebody comes and has a a really good reason. Then then we're, we're usually the, hopefully the first to 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 take care of something like that, so. By by leaving that a little extra cushion there helps and obviously we, if we had to, we could probably check someplace else, but. It's always nice to have something still in the bank for savings there too. So if there's nobody that has any issues with that, I think there's your, there's your marching words for that one, Sue.
I will do that.
Um, I just wanna thank you for uh timely budgets, um keeping everything in in line for us, um looks good. Um, department has done a nice job and and especially with a trying year that we had to go through, so like we've, like we've said all along, um. We're, we're, we're a great place here, so I think uh, I think uh going forward, we we get the opportunity to to really shine again, so. Keep up the good work.
And the binders were incredible.
Oh, tho- those, those are, those are yearly thing from now on. Sorry.
I was, I was just gonna say, should we budget more for uh binders and paper?
No, we have a new copier now that is awesome. I I mean, we've had it a whole week and I have not at one point threatened to throw it in the river, which is in the last six years, I threatened. A hundred times to throw that, cause you would start to scan these packets which have a hundred and some pages and thirty pages. Then it would jam or it wouldn't. Now, we're all set up, I can do binders upon binders next year, no problem at all.
Perfect.
And and just think about it, binders when are in everybody's presence, can you imagine? How much fun it will be instead of trying to do this remotely, I I.
Yeah. So with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion in second, before we take the thumbs up, I will gladly look forward to seeing everybody in two weeks in the council chamber, so. All those in favor? All right, guys, thank you.
Have a good night.
Night everyone.
Good night.